When they call you up, I'll put your presentation up on the screen.
Okay.
And all you gotta do is just say clicker. The clicker is plugged into my laptop.
Okay.
So if I say you're clicking it, you're like, new single?
Over there, not here.
You know what to say next, and I'll come back to next one.
Okay. All right.
Skylar, Emily, Emily, Skylar. He's a rock star.
Thank you for being a great rock star.
I tried.
Awesome. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this meeting of the Genesee County Board of Commissioners to order at this time, 5:30 PM. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Present.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Gatzinger. Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Present.
Commissioner Kuzno. Commissioner Wayho. Commissioner Fluele.
Present.
All right, thank you. We have a quorum. We'll have our invocation tonight by our Vice Chair, Sean Shoemaker, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. You'd all bow your heads, please. Definitely, Father, we're so humbled to be able to come to you, and we're so blessed to serve this wonderful community, Lord. We've had our ups and downs, but we know it's you that guides us, that guides the principles of this board, and we hope that you would bless us with the knowledge and the guidance to lead this great community, Lord. We thank you for this time of year that we celebrate your Son, Jesus Christ, and we ask that the rest of our community someday would understand, accept the peace that comes through him. Lord, I thank you for all that you do for us, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I declare the allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First order of business tonight is our meeting minutes. What is your pleasure?
Move it.
From the previous meeting, November 2012, it's been moved by Commissioner Kuzno and supported by Commissioner Brian Fluele. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, motion passes. At this time, we come to the public speaking portion of our agenda tonight. If there are any members of the public who wish to address this body, please come forward at this time stating your name and your city, township, or village or residency for record. You'll have two minutes to speak when you hear the tone indication that will let you know that you have completed your allotted time. This time, any speakers?
Hello, can you hear me? My name is Robert Link, and I live in Atlas Township. I'm here today to speak out against the usage of Flock Safety Surveillance Cameras in our county. These were sold to us as license plate readers, but Flock claims its vehicle fingerprint technology is unique and that it also collects and identifies a vehicle's make, model, color, bumper sticker placement, damage, along with other distinguishing attributes, and that they can identify vehicles even when no plate number has been captured. So let's not call it a license plate reader when it is collecting so much more than just your plate number. All of this data is collected from every vehicle that passes every camera with date and timestamps and stored entirely by the Flock Safety Company. This creates two alarming situations. One, the use of these cameras constitute an unreasonable warrantless search of every driver, suspected of a crime or not, in Genesee County, and therefore is in violation of our Fourth Amendment that protects individuals from unreasonable searches by government. Sure, there is no expectation of privacy on public roads, but there is an expectation that our government is not using a dragnet of 206 cameras throughout our county to actively monitor, record, and log all of my travels 24/7 if I have not been suspected of committing a crime. The second alarming situation is that we cannot trust Flock Safety to keep this sensitive information safe. I do not consent to letting the county allow Flock to record all of my location history, and I cannot opt out of it. I insist everyone go and watch the video on YouTube by Ben Jordan called "We Hacked Flock Safety Cameras in Under 30 Seconds." It highlights how dangerously insecure these cameras really are. It shows that the operating system used by these cameras is Android version 8.0. For context, the current version of Android is 16. Android 8.0 was released in 2017 and received its last security update in 2021.
Please summarize.
Okay. Summarize, we need to cancel the contracts with Flock Safety and remove all of their cameras from our county.
Thank you. Any additional speakers who wish to speak in this public meeting? Any additional speakers who desire to speak? Any additional members of the public who wish to speak in this meeting? All right, seeing none, public speaking is now closed. Now we have before us our communications, our first communication tonight, federal funding impacts on Genesee County. Mr. or Dr. Mark Skidmore is here from Michigan State University. I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Dr. Brown for remarks, and you're welcome to come as she introduces our speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Dr. Skidmore, for coming tonight. I want to give you some background as I tee up Dr. Skidmore, and I think he prefers Mark.
That's fine.
And we had some conversations a while ago, and lots of questions have been stirring up regarding federal funding and the impact to Genesee County. And so, thanks to our partners at Michigan State University, they connected us with Dr. Skidmore, along with Professor Hicks, and the two of them ironically have been doing a massive study of every state in our country and every county in our country. And that presentation was delivered in Lansing a couple of months ago, I think. And so, we weren't able to attend that meeting in Lansing to listen to the presentation, so we extended an invitation for him to come here, and we are delighted that he's able to share with us just 17 slides, over 15 minutes, and then we'll have a chance to ask him questions. And the information that he's going to provide has to do with the federal funding impacts here in Genesee County, because that's a particular county that they happen to do a case study on. And so, we want to have him present and just unpack that information so that we can help, to help us understand the implications. So, Dr. Skidmore, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. It's real pleasure to have an opportunity to talk with you. You can see, I don't know if this is now up on the screen. It is, okay, great. So, the idea of both of the studies that I'm going to refer to, one by myself, which was recently published in the Journal of Regional Analysis and Policy, and by Michael Hicks at Ball State University, we were interested in the importance of federal dollars flowing out of the county in the form of taxes and federal dollars flowing into the county in the form of a variety of expenditures. And then, what are the factors that determine the net outflow and the net inflow? This net flow is called the balance of payments going to each place. And so, as backdrop, the motivation for this work, and I think it's useful, and I commend you all for thinking about how the potential federal budgets will affect local government budgets, and in particular, your budget. We know the federal debt is over $38 trillion now and is on a unsustainable trajectory in that it's, the debt is growing faster than our economy on average, and that's how I define unsustainable. The current deficit in fiscal year '25 is about $1.8 trillion. The federal revenue, for context, is just $4.6 trillion, so you can see that contrast. And then, interest rates are now over $1 trillion a year, and that sort of cuts into the expenditures that can be used for other things. And so, all of this is a backdrop. For the month of October of this year, the deficit was $284 billion. Now, the deficit from month to month varies, but the anticipated deficit for this coming year is about $2 trillion. But if this is any sign, it will be greater than that. In addition to that, in addition to the new debt that we will issue, we have to turn over an additional $7 trillion of debt that is coming to a close, and the only way you can pay that is by issuing new debt. So we have to find borrowers for a total of about $9 trillion this next year. And just today, the Federal Reserve announced that they were going to lower interest rates, which eases the pressure on the federal government in terms of renewing that debt, but it's still a lot of pressure. And they announced that they would begin buying government debt, and they buy government debt by issuing, they just print money. Okay? So, that's kind of where, and so, in December, that's what will happen. So, right now, we are at historic spending highs and historic spending lows. And so, if you look at what's happening, so as I talked about, the net outflow is this federal taxes paid to each state, whether it's a county or a state, we can aggregate that and look at the net outflow of taxes. Income taxes are the primary. And then, that inflow come from a variety of sources, and it comes to state and local governments as well as people. And you can see here that most of the spending comes in the form of direct payments, like Social Security, Medicare, Medicaid. The grants even here come to the state. The lion's share is Medicaid. So, if we're going to cut spending, it's going to come in the form of cuts in those kinds of categories, funds for people who we know may need those funds, or are, and so, that's a challenge. And if those funds are cut, then different places have a different impact. On the other hand, if you raise taxes, the higher income places will pay more in taxes. And so, there's this structure that goes on that we need to think about, and each place has a different impact of any potential changes. So here, I show the federal balance of payments by state as a proportion of GDP, and you can see those dark states, they have more than 20% of their state's income coming in the form of a net spent, you know, inflow of funds after they've paid taxes. Michigan is about the middle there, about 5% to 10%. But if we were to balance the budget on average, Michigan would experience a $5,000 per capita cut. So you can't just, if you're going to address the budget challenges, the federal deficit challenges, you have to do it incrementally, because that would have a huge impact on the economy. It would just stall the economy immediately. But that's kind of the challenge that we're in. If you're trying to explain the factors that determine the net inflow, the two, the three most important things are military spending, but more important than that are poverty and disability, and those two things are closely related. If we are unhealthy and we're struggling, it's harder to work. And if you're not working, you're not contributing, income taxes. And at the same time, you may need and qualify for various benefits, so that net balance of payments is, those two factors, poverty and disability, and of course, that is different from every place in the world. Not in the world, but in the United States. So, one long-term strategy that I think would help increase resilience is to work on improving our overall health and well-being so that more people will be able to work, and also, then they wouldn't need as much in the way of services. That's a long-term strategy. What I'd like to turn to now is the county-level analysis, and I'm going to focus on the transfer payments. Those are the Social Security, Medicare, Medicaid, all of those kinds of things. And then, taxes. And these dark areas are places that have the highest inflow of these transfer payments to places. Social Security, Social Security Disability, Medicare, Medicaid, SNAP, and other kinds of transfer. So this is, in some places, more than 40% of income comes from the flow of these benefits to these places. This is what it looks like in Michigan. So those very dark areas have 40% to 60% of their income resulting from these transfers. So those will be the most sensitive to any changes in the federal budget. In contrast, the wealthier places and counties across the country have greater tax payment. So those dark areas, you have 20% to 30% of taxes as a proportion of income, and then the lighter areas are lower in terms of its tax burden. And if you look at Michigan again, you can see the wealthier communities are the darker communities. And so, these are mirror images of one another. If you are a lower-income, lower-wealth county, you have a lot more reliance on those inflow of dollars. If you're a high-income county, you are paying more in taxes, so there's this inverse relationship that's going on. Non-metro places pay a lower proportion of their income in taxes and have a higher transfer share as a proportion of income than metro places. So we've looked at it in terms of counties, but we know that within a county, there are communities that are more wealthier and poorer as well, so that it's just a granularity issue. So that gives you a flavor of what's happening around the country and what might happen if you had to experience a significant change in spending. And I think this is where Dr. Brown and I sort of connected, is it's useful, and I know you are all thinking about, well, what if there is a significant change in federal government spending to bring that deficit down to a more sustainable level? What kinds of spending would, how would that trickle down to our, you know, Genesee County or to the county budget? And so, right now, for this cycle, and we haven't really substantively addressed the deficit issue in the coming year, but we know we're going to have a reduction in Medicaid in the Big Beautiful Bill Act. SNAP enrollment changes are anticipated to go down. We have some tax changes that will reduce progressivity of the income tax, and we have some reductions in early government transfers across most agencies. So on the domestic side, there are some cuts. And so, what Michael Hicks and I did was just looked at the county budget as best we could and mapped out what, you know, with Josh's help and Crystal's help, mapped out what categories of funds come from the federal government to the county, and then, what might happen to those funds based on what's in the One Big Beautiful Bill Act. That's a mouthful, isn't it? So, so this, these are the major funding categories of potential flows into, or flows into Genesee County. I've highlighted the funds coming from the Department of Treasury, about $34 million. That is going to go away, but you know that already. The American Rescue Plan Act and the COVID funds were a temporary increase to address the challenges during that time. So that's going to go down. That's something that's already known. The other categories from the Department of Agriculture, Housing and Urban Development, Department of Justice, and Health and Human Services are our guesstimate of what might happen in this cycle as the new spending comes. And I think what's more important is this idea that there are some changes, and it is going to have an impact. And right now, it is a substantial impact, but we still haven't addressed the large deficit that we probably need to close the gap on at some point, and I don't have a crystal ball. I'm not sure what might happen. As I mentioned earlier, I don't know if I mentioned it during now, our presentation here, but in addition to the $2 trillion, there's $7 trillion of debt that needs to be turned over. And so, just today, the Federal Reserve announced that they were going to start printing money to cover some of that debt, so in December, they anticipate buying about $40 billion in Treasuries. So that's sort of how we're managing it right now. But I think it's useful to think about and plan for, well, what if there is a significant cut that's a little bit even more than what's happening now, and how do we balance it out? And so, I think the best thing is to think about it and to plan, you know, have a contingency plan about what factors are most important and how you would make adjustments. How can you partner with the foundations? They can help, but they can't fill the gap. So all of these things are an important part of, you know, moving forward in a positive way. So in summary, we, there's a lot of variation across the country in terms of transfer payments and effective tax rates. Metro counties pay more in taxes and use federal government transfers than do non-metro places, and these differences are substantial. There are going to be expenditure changes in this cycle in Medicaid, SNAP, and employment. There are going to be some tax changes that affect households, but all of these cuts also affect state, potentially affect state and local governments. And some of these cuts are going to have an impact this cycle, but I think it's useful to look down the road, because we have these larger issues that we're going to have to address at some point. Poverty and disability and health are the most important determinants of the flow of funds into a place as well as the flow of funds out, the balance of payments at both the county and the state levels. And so, I just welcome communities to think about scenario planning and be able to have a plan in place if there are adjustments that are needed, which I think at some point there will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I'm going to go back to Dr. Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, I want to thank Dr. Skidmore, Mark, for coming and presenting that information. And so, the big takeaway for me, and I think for all of us, is to, you know, not look at this as doom and gloom, although it's not very encouraging, but at least we know the risk factors, and we know that, you know, given all of this information and the potential impacts that they will have, we can make some informed decisions moving forward as we look at our own budget here in Genesee County. And so, we know there are mixed messages coming from, you know, the federal government, state government, but at least we can posture ourselves, and we were on a Zoom call yesterday talking about, you know, what assets do we have? One of the assets that we do have is the systems that we have in place in Genesee County. We do have some foundations, although they can't be our total savior, but we had two or three foundations on the call yesterday who said, you know, we do have some dollars, but we can't cover everything. We do have the universities who we can partner with to leverage some things, but we, the key is, is that we're all going to have to work together and collaborate a little bit more. So, thank you for giving us that landscape.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions? Commissioner Kuzno.
Yes, Doctor, you know, I've been following this net outflow, inflow for decades now, and Michigan has been a negative in the inflow. We've always been outflow and receiving less than what we give to Washington and things. And so, that's nothing new. It's, this county in particular has become even worse than decades ago because of the, we used to be the second most prosperous county in the nation. Not Michigan, the nation. And we're nowhere near that now. So, we don't nearly receive, even now, what we give out. There's less coming in, and I know how it works across the state. I've followed this for decades. What I did find interesting with your presentation is the long-term effect of healthcare, disability, et cetera. And I don't know if you know it, I don't know if you've researched it yet, but I would hope you would, but Genesee County has, since I've been following it for at least 20-some years, has the worst healthcare outcome in the state of Michigan, year after year after year. Sometimes 82nd, but usually 83rd. But yet, we spend more than any other county per capita on our residents, and that includes private and public healthcare. Have you ever looked at that and how that affects this county?
Well, so, one clarification, when you refer to the net flow of dollars coming, is it out of Genesee County or out of Michigan?
I was just talking in general out of Michigan.
So, so in this evaluation, Michigan is a net, we pay less in taxes than we get money coming in. In every state, because we're running deficit.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you, because it used to be the opposite. We paid more and received less.
Not this, in this era, this cycle, or in this year. We, and because we're running deficits, nearly every state receives more funds than go to Washington in form of taxes. So I'm sorry about that, I just want to clarify.
Okay.
But yes, sometimes it is true that spending more on healthcare doesn't mean that we're better off. There are some things that, you know, society and culturally, we can do to become healthier, but a lot of it has to do with lifestyle and not necessarily how much money we spend on healthcare. So that's a challenge for us all.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any additional discussion? Commissioner Wayho.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Brown, for bringing Dr. Skidmore to talk with us. Couple of questions, I want to make sure I'm understanding the map of the Couple of questions. I want to make sure I'm understanding the map of Michigan. I'm going to say what I think it says, and then you can just say if I'm right or wrong. Looks to me, of all the counties in the state, 83 counties, Oakland County seems to be the top dog in terms of tax payments to the federal government. But then that means they're at the bottom in terms of what they receive back.
Yeah, on average.
On average. So, and then the counties north of us, almost all of them, look to me that they pay less to the federal government, but receive quite a bit more in terms of Social Security, Medicaid, Medicare, et cetera. Is that right?
That's right.
And Genesee County, if I'm remembering the color, we're kind of in the middle of the pack?
Yeah.
Okay, that's helpful. And then in terms of the list of categories of federal spending, the departments mostly, I think, what makes up the 28 million, or almost $28 million in HHS? Is that Medicaid spending, or is it something else?
I'd have to go back and look at my notes. There are several categories that are slated for reduction. And I think a big one is Medicaid. There was, during COVID, there was an uptick in qualification of marginal families being able to access Medicaid. And that was set to end in this cycle. And that was one of the reasons for the shutdown, because there was a disagreement about whether that uptick that occurred during COVID should continue, or whether it should end. And so that's a big part of it.
But probably of that, the 28 million was the second largest amount after the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan, which we know we're not going to receive again. So probably the bulk of it is Medicaid, if you had to guess?
Yeah, I think so.
And then the other one, surprisingly to me, and these are all Genesee County numbers.
28 or 2.8?
It was, well, I read it as 27-point-something, and I rounded it when I wrote it down.
I think it was 2.8.
So it's not, oh.
I think it's more on the order of 2 million.
So how much was agriculture, then? I might have misread that one as well. I thought that that was 8 million. Did I read that wrong?
It was 8.1 million.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've got it here.
It's on page 16.
So, no, I'm not talking about the cuts. I'm talking about the total funding. So it is almost $28 million, 27.817. And then agriculture, from the U.S. Department of Agriculture, coming into the counties, 8.165. So it sounds like of the 27 million, a lot of that's Medicaid and other programs and HHS. But I was more curious about 8.1 in agriculture. Are those subsidies for?
That's like school lunch programs, other types of food assistance, et cetera. That's primarily what it is.
So lunches that K-12 students get? I see. All right, thank you. I appreciate this information. Very, very interesting. Thank you again to Dr. Brown for bringing this before us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, any additional discussion? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you for your time tonight. All right, moving on. Our next communication tonight is a presentation that's going to be presented by Ms. Mia Turner and Ms. Joyce Sanders from Northgate Be Ready Enrichment Services.
It's not quite reflecting yet. Get our PowerPoint going here. There we go. Awesome, awesome. Thank you. Couldn't live without our tech friends. Thank you. All right, good? All right, thank you.
The video didn't come through, so I had to do it.
All right, well, while we are transitioning, I will just go ahead and get started. First of all, good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for this time. I am the Executive Director of Human Resources for Northgate, Mia Turner.
We'll wait till you get you good, get you set up.
Mr. Chair, while they're doing that, if I could take an opportunity to congratulate Northgate for being selected as a GM Supplier of the Year. Congratulations to you guys. Nice to see that giant sign on your building. Just today, I saw the sign. And so that, I knew that took a lot of hard work and dedication, so congratulations to the whole staff at Northgate.
Thank you so much. That is a perfect segue, Commissioner Brown, to what we're here to talk about. We absolutely are beyond proud of that recognition. Out of 26 million suppliers nationally, they chose us. And one of the reasons internationally and nationally, thank you. And one of the reasons they chose us is the program we're here to talk about tonight. So that was a perfect segue. Again, good evening, and thank you for this time to stand before you. It really is an honor because we believe that your mission, Commissioners, of shaping opportunity, strengthening families, and improving the quality of life for the residences of Genesee County aligns so powerfully with the heart of the program that I'm here to introduce. So at Northgate, we stand on the platform that people can rise when someone is willing to stand with them. And from that belief, Be Ready Enrichment Services was born. Be Ready Enrichment Services is the tangible arm of Northgate's mission to bless people. But it's more than a program. It's a bridge. It's a bridge that connects people to stability, to workforce readiness, and to educational growth. And it also connects to what we believe is the heart, a renewed sense of dignity and possibility.
Our apologies to you for the technical.
No, no worries.
Our team works really hard, but you know, technology can be unreliable at times.
Awesome. All right. So the work that we do, and we believe that we do together, strengthens neighborhoods, it supports employers, and it lifts the economy and the social fabric of this county. And so what we wanted to do is introduce the program a little more deeply to you and provide some context of what we do and where we're going. And to do that, we're going to share a video that tells a little bit about Be Ready. And on the other side of that video, this beautiful lady I'm standing next to is going to speak specifically about how Be Ready is impactful. Joyce Sanders, next to me, is the Be Ready Manager and Chief Program Officer, and a remarkable leader, whose heart and vision just models the excellence of Be Ready's success.
Thank you so much for that amazing introduction. Let's start our video.
Be Ready Enrichment Services is Northgate's tangible demonstration of its mission to bless people. We provide support services, personal enrichment, and professional development designed to empower our team members. By investing in you, for you, and with you, together, we can create pathways to sustainable success, helping you not just get by, but hopefully get ahead to a bigger, brighter future for you, your family, and ultimately, the community as a whole.
My dad was always looking for ways to help people, but we never had any way to really formalize the process. And when my wife, Sarah, and I were discussing our philanthropy opportunities, her idea was that we could pour into our employees directly, and that that would be the best opportunity for them to flourish. And so I came to George, our president at the time of Northgate, and I shared with him Sarah's idea, and he ran with it and just developed this program from there. I believe we're just at the forefront of this, and that it's going to develop into even more opportunities for us to bless our employees.
Core of everything that we do is the Be Ready program, and our mission is to bless people. And so we truly do take that very seriously. And as we're having our planning meetings for the year, virtually every decision we make is filtered through that lens of what does it mean to bless people?
When I think about Be Ready Enrichment and how it fosters a sense of community among the employees, I go directly to the cohorts that we have, the Ignite, Shift, and Launch. Those cohorts are an amazing sense of team and family.
In Launch, we did a lot of examples, a lot of test runs, I guess you can say, of us standing up with each other, having a partner, having multiple people with us, and going over some examples that employee will have, issues that employee will have. I, I mean, I'm just not going to speak for experience. I have seen other people, and I think it's worth it. I think it's worth putting more time into it. It's worth bringing different levels of people inside of, inside Launch, bringing them to Launch. So I started as a repacker and packing parts, and now I work for the Executive Director. I'm basically her second.
Like I had another family besides my real family that I do have in the world. And that makes you more comfortable to come to work because you know people have your back, and they'll support you like they want you to support them.
When I first got hired in, I didn't have any transportation. I was actually going back and forth through, you know, the bus system.
She explained the program to me, asked me if I was interested. And then she, you know, took all my information to see if I qualified for the program. So happened I did. Northgate also helped me get the car, as well as get a repair, you know, and it's been a blessing.
Forge Garage is a resource and outreach to the community of Flint and surrounding areas. We exist to help eliminate the transportation hurdle and barrier for families in our community.
In the past, we've worked mostly with nonprofit groups. But we were able to come across Northgate and align with them because they're also, even though they are a for-profit group, they very much care about the community here. It's very important to them to be not only a part of the community, but to see it thrive.
We try to now look at it at a different approach. And when we see a company like Northgate that treats its employees like this, and looks at those barriers, and looks at trying to help those resources, that's where we come in. And like I said, it's just been a perfect fit at that point.
Our community partners play a major role in the success of Be Ready. Our service model includes offering help on-site, which means partners come in and employees have access to Secretary of State or friend of the court. We've also built wonderful relationships with partners like CHAB, where we can send referrals directly to them, and our employees have the ability to engage right here at work, while they're at lunch or on break. It really does make a tremendous difference in their ability to access some vital resources that are available in our community. So what you just saw was the very heart of Be Ready Enrichment Services. Investing in you, for you, with you, for sustainable success. Be Ready is about access and opportunity. People don't need to be fixed. They just need access to training and support and resources. And then the opportunity to take that training and use it, use it in a way that can help them get ahead. Access and opportunity are what move our residents from just getting by to finally, finally getting ahead. The people we serve through Be Ready Enrichment Services often come from second chance populations and Alice households. They make too much to qualify for help, but still not enough to fully get ahead. When access and opportunity are in place, mobility becomes possible, not just for individuals, but for the entire community. This is a proven process. We have helped 50 families stabilize housing. 14 of those families were actually homeless, and they are now in safe, affordable homes. We've helped 60 families stabilize transportation through our partners with Forge Flint and some of the other community partners that we have. These families now have reliable transportation so that they can get to work and take care of their families, and do what they need to do to gain stability. Our impact has been recognized both locally and globally. We've been honored to receive the 2024 General Motors Supplier of the Year Overdrive Award, which centered on our impact through Be Ready Enrichment Services. We also received the 2025 Business Impact Award from our own Flint and Genesee group right here in Flint, Michigan. This kind of recognition reflects the strength and, reflects the strength of our approach and the impact we're having right here in our own community. And that's why we're here tonight, to show how Be Ready is strengthening families and the workforce in Genesee County, and to explore how we can expand that impact together with you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Joyce. The success of Be Ready, in our opinion, is proof of what happens when people are given support, structure, and someone who believes in their potential. But we also know this, transformation is strongest when shared. So we are excited to announce that in 2026, Be Ready Enrichment Services is expanding beyond the doors of Northgate. Because we understand that when government, community partners, agencies, employers, and service providers come together and align with purpose, that the impact is exponential. So we're here today not just simply to present the program, but to deepen partnership. Be Ready is ready, so to speak, to expand training opportunities, develop target workforce pathways, and to collaborate, harnessing the power of partnership. So we are especially interested in partnering with the county to deliver more enrichment programs that prepare individuals for sustainable employment and long-term self-sufficiency. We look forward to exploring opportunities to intersect our missions and how, through shared effort, we can multiply impact for the people that we all serve. So thank you again for your time this evening, your leadership and your commitment to this community. And we really do believe together we can.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions? Any comments? All right. Thank you so much for your presentation, and thank you for the impact that you are making in community. Thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to call up Mr. John Care. He's going to come up and talk to us briefly about Brownfield.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. This is a low-tech presentation. You have two, you have a handout.
Microphone, please. You may want to pull it up some.
Can you hear?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. You have a two-piece handout entitled Background Motrose, B-R-A, not that other word. Essentially, on January 7th, at your meeting, this will be on the agenda. The reason that we wanted to talk about it tonight is because time is of the essence. If the B-R-A isn't approved by the Genesee County Board of Commissioners on the January 7th meeting, the incentives for it are lost. So this is not a typical kind of presentation. Normally, we would have brought this to committee. But because of timing and some other factors, we couldn't get it to committee to you. So we wanted it to come tonight. Now, there was going to be a consultant here that represents the developer for the B-R-A, but he couldn't make it in because of weather. So you can read the handout. The resolution from Motrose City is attached to it. I'll defer I'll defer to Brian McMillan if you want to add anything to how this process kind of works briefly.
I don't have much to add. I'm working on it right now. The, there has to be a public hearing at that meeting on January 7th and we have to give notice to all the taxing jurisdictions that are in the area where this property is. Working on that right now. I'm working on that with the treasurer's office and the clerk's office because I think the clerk is going to be the one who's sending out the mailings. And we'll have that all taken care of. So you'll be ready on your, at your meeting on January 7th.
And then just for some background information, this is a property in the city of Montrose that somebody is coming in to rehab a dilapidated vacant property right now. The developer wants to come in, put it in the brownfield, and what they'll do is they'll capture that difference between current assessment and new assessment and that'll help offset the costs to do that development.
Commissioner Kuzner?
Yeah, that's, of course, in my district, it's a building that's, I don't know how many years it's set, vacant in downtown Montrose at the main intersection. It would be the northwest corner of that. It is dilapidated. The city of Mount Morris has been trying to figure out what to do with it for 15 years or even longer. I don't know. But they have some investors that would like to come in and rehabilitate the property. It's my understanding the first floor will be commercial and the second floor will be housing. Is that correct, John?
That's, that's my belief too.
And there is a time constraint on it. I know that Mr. Care and the Brownfield staff have been working on this for some time. They've kept me informed, but this is the first that the rest of the board is, is hearing about it. And we're under a little bit of a time constraint because of state requirements that have to be met so that the investors can take advantage of this situation. And I hate using the word advantage, but still, it's, it's a good investment for the community. So many of our small cities across the county were developed about the same time, 150, 180 years ago or whatever. So it's one of those old, old buildings that's in the downtown area. And they have somebody that wants to rehabilitate it. And this is just part of the process of allowing them to do that to meet the state requirements. And we are under, as John just explained, under a little bit of a time constraint due to the way the holidays hit. And it just takes time to get things to go through. And at least it's not coming in after the deadline. We're just trying to meet a deadline.
Any, any?
Any questions you have for John?
So, so.
Go ahead.
So I see a couple of questions. My inclination is to support whatever you want to do in your district or not support what you don't want to do. So if it's your suggestion and your recommendation that we support it, you can count on my vote. Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you. Through the chair to John. John, here's a question. What assurances do we have that if this project actually fails, and what I mean by that, let's say the developers go broke, that the district is not stuck with a half-finished building or anything else like that? Is there a bond taken out by this group or how's this work?
I, I think if I understand your question correctly, I, I can't answer that, but the gentleman that was going to be here tonight, the consultant for the project, will be here on the 7th. And I'll make, communicate with him prior to that and get back with that answer. The one thing that I can tell you is that the county will assume no liability. I've confirmed that under, so with respect to liability, the county assumes no liability. Your question, I think, is what happens in the district in, in, at the local government unit? I, I don't know the answer to that. I'll get you the answer to that.
And on top of it, if I, if I may, Mr. Chair, does the Brownfield continue with that piece of property? Because I assume it does because it's not based on the owner. I'm assuming it continues with the property also.
I, I don't know, but I'll find out and get you the answer.
John, just if you can, next couple of days, just get with me. I've got a couple here that I'd, I'll go over with you and we'll.
Okay.
If you could hammer out what the gentleman will get to take care of. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Commissioner Kuzner?
Mr. Shoemaker, it's, it's my understanding the county is nothing more than a pass-through and how that affects if they go broke, the city of Montrose. John will find that out.
All right. Any additional?
Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right. Next we'll have, now we come to the reports of the standing committees. There's one presentation that is necessary tonight. Under my report, Resolution 2025-2768, approval request by Genesee County's Healthcare Coalition to change the pharmacy benefit manager to Smith. And so we're going to ask Plant Moran to come up for this presentation. I see our HR department is with them. Anita, take it away.
Okay. That's great. Thank you. I won't put this down because I'm always going to. Good evening. Anita Galeta, Human Resources Labor Relations Director. You may recall last week I had to stop myself and say we're going to put a pin in that because I jumped to this agenda item. Our healthcare coal, our healthcare coalition, who are healthcare consultants here, Emily and Jonathan, work with that committee and advise for changes to healthcare or providers or how we do healthcare. They have presented to the coalition to change our pharmacy vendor, currently Express Scripts, and the recommendation is to RX benefits. And they have a very short seven-slide presentation to kind of walk you through why that is their recommendation. The coalition members have all already voted, so the next step is for it to come to you for approval. And if you vote to approve that tonight, then we will start the process of getting that changed. Emily Chernowski and Jonathan Trevan.
Thanks, Anita. And is it okay if I put it up just a little further?
Sure.
All right. Thank you all for your time here. We will keep this brief, but the intention, as Anita said, is for us to share a little bit of the background, the why, and kind of what's in it for county employees and the county itself as a plan sponsor. And so again, we'll go through this. Hopefully I can get these, the clicker to work appropriately. All right. So by way of background, as Anita mentioned, the county has had the pharmacy component of the health plan, the medical plan administered by Express Scripts for many years. And because we love to, we assign acronyms to everything, but the pharmacy benefit manager or PBM, in this case, again, has been and currently is Express Scripts. As we probably all know from just existing in this country at this moment, pharmacy spend is and has been extremely high and continues to rise. It was actually identified several years ago as one of the major cost drivers of the medical plan here at the county. And several years ago, we actually helped the coalition and the county, the healthcare coalition, together with the county, go through an RFP process specifically for the pharmacy benefit component of the plan. And at that time, it was decided to re-up the contract with Express Scripts with a slightly different partner that exists now with Express Scripts in hopes to improve the contract terms and help contain some of the costs associated with the pharmacy spend. The contract terms did improve back then, so that was good. And we actually, as a coalition, chatted at length about not just improving contract terms, but maybe even taking that next step and going with a completely different model at that time. And at that time, the county wasn't quite ready. The coalition wasn't ready. And I, I will say, since that time, we continue to see pharmacy costs rise in the county's plan. And we all know this is not a unique problem, right? Amazing therapies coming to market these days. Anytime you turn on the TV, you hear about various new medications, right? They can be life transformative, life-saving therapies, and they come at a very big cost, right? But we really focused on, again, the cost component of the driver. How do we manage this piece that is driving costs and actually at an unsustainable pace? So in the U.S. in general, pharmacy spend next year in 2026 is anticipated to be 14% to 18% more than it is this year. Okay? And some of that is the same drugs going to be 14% to 18% more. Some of that is, again, new drugs coming to market for the same conditions. Okay? We also know from spending a lot of time in the data with, with the coalition, that the county employees and their families take a lot of prescriptions. That's just kind of the nature of what's happening. So what that means is not only do we have a lot of prescriptions being consumed, taken, but also each one of those prescriptions is growing in cost. So we kind of have these confluence of constraints or some concerns. We also know that when the county renewed its plan in the most recent plan year, so as of June of 2025, the cost of the plan went up pretty significantly and employees bore a good chunk of that cost because of the constraints that they exist with the hard caps. And so we know that when we took a look at this, hey, what's driving those costs? We again came to the, to the very glaring conclusion, a lot of this is scripts. So that's kind of a background. Oh, and, and unfortunately, the county's health plan continues to run over budget, right? So we've got a lot being spent there. So what do we do about it? As Anita said, the coalition has been meeting, talking about this, what do we do? And we again have revisited the selections or the opportunity to select a different pharmacy benefit manager. And so that's what the coalition has voted to do with their, both as a coalition and with their membership. And here's what's recommended. So make a move away from Express Scripts who manages the pharmacy component and move to a new pharmacy benefit manager or PBM that is named Smith RX. The current arrangement with Express Scripts is a traditional arrangement. And much to our horror and chagrin and much to kind of what is normative in this space, Express Scripts, when asked multiple times, will not disclose how much money they make on the arrangement with the county. That's not unique to Express Scripts. There were some articles as part of this presentation. You can certainly spend a lot of time going down the rabbit hole on pharmacy benefit managers. That's been in the news a lot. I know that is definitely a hot topic right now nationally. But again, one of the things that gives us a lot of heartburn is lack of transparency. Again, if we, if you can't tell us how much money you're making on this, this particular contract, how do we know if we're getting value, right? How do we know what we're paying for? So contrary to Express Scripts, Smith RX is a pharmacy benefit manager that is paid by their administrative fees only. So they are disclosing exactly what it is that they're being paid and for what it is that they're being paid. They do not make any money on any other component of a very complicated system that is this pharmacy benefit manager system today. Okay? In fact, Smith RX was born out of this desire to help employees, their families, and health plans pay the lowest net cost for prescriptions. They want to get paid for doing that work, but they don't want to get paid as a function of how many prescriptions or how much they're saving on prescriptions. They want to get paid for helping do what it is that their mission is. So the, the recommendation is to move to this transparent fee-based model. In so doing, when we took a look at what would be the impact, we're not talking about changing how much people are paying for prescriptions in terms of their copays. We're really not talking about what medications are covered by the plan and how the plan is going to cover that. We're really talking about functioning in a way that is transparent and getting lowest net cost. So over 95% of the individuals on the county plan, so that's employees and their family members, will have no meaningful change. They won't, they'll have a different name on their ID card as a change, as a function of this change, but they won't have any other change to their prescription benefit as a result of this. In fact, there are a handful of individuals who will pay less or nothing for their medications as a result of this change. And that's because Smith RX can leverage certain programs that Express Scripts does not right now to help get people these medications at no cost. And just to make it real for you all, I imagine that if you've turned on the TV and have seen a ad for a medication, you notice at the end of the ad, it will say all of the list of side effects, which is usually very long. But oftentimes, then there's also a, some sort of call-out, like if you cannot afford this prescription, AstraZeneca may help, right? Have you all heard, heard that? Those are the programs that exist right now that actually Smith RX will help connect people to, that not only helps that individual potentially pay nothing for their, their medication, but also helps the county pay nothing for that medication. And when we're talking about some of these really expensive medications that may be $10,000, $15,000, $25,000 a month, all of a sudden, it becomes very real dollars if we have, using my example, AstraZeneca pay for that instead of the county paying $25,000 a month. So as a result of this, we are estimating that the county can avoid about, north of $1 million. So we've estimated about $1,2 million in pharmacy spend, which ends up being a very real way to drive some cost containment on the plan. So beyond just cost containment, we also feel like this is a strategic move for the county because of the things that are listed here. Again, you, you know what you are paying and what you're getting for that service, right? So it's transparent. And we feel that that is good stewardship of resources, right? Understanding what the contract is and what is being paid is, is part of really being mindful stewards. We also believe that Smith will provide and has aligned incentives. So they're not trying to make sure that the county continues to purchase drugs at a high price to get some rebates back, but also drive their own revenue that's not part of their model. Again, they exist to have the lowest net cost for these farm, for these benef, or for these medications. So I mentioned kind of being good stewards of, of the resources. Again, strategically, we feel that it's really important for the county to exercise the fiduciary responsibility it has to its employees and their families, right? So being, spending plan assets wisely. And then quite frankly, if I am a person who qualifies for no-cost medication and right now I'm paying $40 a month for that medication, that is a win for me, right? So instead of having a $40 expense, I have a no-dollar expense for the same medication. Again, that's, we, we want to make sure to extend that support to county employees and their family members. And there, we could spend a lot of time talking about this. We won't. We have as a coalition, but there are these programs, not only like that AstraZeneca program, but programs like Mark Cuban, Cost Plus, and other programs where there's a lower-cost channel to get the exact same medication. And we feel that, and we stand by our recommendation, that it is in the county's best interest and the employees' best interest to be able to have access to that lower-cost channel. We did a series of employee meetings, maybe about a month ago, and kind of provided some FAQs. This is a snapshot of kind of what's in it for me, what can I expect as an employee or a member on the health plan. I'm not going to go through these, but again, it's kind of just a high-level snapshot of, hey, what, what, what would it mean if we stayed with Express Scripts and what would it mean if we make this change to Smith RX? And then finally, I mentioned that there are some articles here. Again, if you would like to do some more homework or research on this, feel free to read those if you can't sleep at night. So anything else, Jonathan? All right. Any questions? Or wait, am I supposed to ask that?
Oh, no. You're just fine.
Okay.
If you ask another question, I'm going to bring the gavel to you.
Okay.
Commissioner Dr. Brown.
Yes, the question I had, I saw Mark Cuban's name.
Mm-hmm.
On that last slide.
Yep.
And I know he has been really.
And I know he has been really innovative in this space with lowering drug costs. So will this Smith RX program allow our employees to access that kind of a model?
Yeah. In fact, Smith, thank you for the question. Smith RX was one of the first pharmacy benefit managers to have Mark Cuban Cost Plus mail-order drugs as part of their benefits. So I don't have to go and do that on my own. It's actually integrated and and actually served up to me as an option if I'm with Smith RX. So yes, they, because they have aligned desires to again, bring low cost or lowest net cost to individuals who are taking medications, they aligned with Mark Cuban maybe four years ago or three years ago, shortly after after it was brought to market as an option.
And and did Smith RX come to us or did we go out and find them?
We went out and found them in full transparency. Our our group has made and recommended Smith RX for other organizations that we serve, including other municipal organizations that have successfully transferred to Smith and have had good good experience with them. Go ahead, Jonathan.
I think it's also important though to point out, we we did conduct an RFP.
Yeah.
So this wasn't sole source or or anything like that. We did a a full market RFP on this benefit.
Well, I I my final comment, I just applaud the Healthcare Coalition for doing due diligence in this work. And thanks for coming up with this alternative that's going to save the county money.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. I have to also just put a shout out. The the Healthcare Coalition is really a shining star. Like if we think about some of the more forward-thinking and mindful investment that they are all making, it is it is actually very, very remarkable how how much they are dialed in and how well they help challenge us and make us like truly able to serve you all in in a meaningful way. So thank you.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I noticed on there, and thank you for the presentation, I've noticed on there that you said ninety-five percent of our employees won't notice a change.
Yes.
Now, you know what I'm gonna ask next, right?
What about the five percent?
What about the five percent?
Yeah.
Because, you know, we've changed the way we do healthcare down here at the county before and there's been some people left out or that have some had some major issues that have suffered. So I just want to know if you could fill me in a little more on that, what we should expect for those res or for those individuals, those employees, and how it's going to affect them moving forward.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's a very good question. And in fact, the Healthcare Coalition has had a lot of and they don't, one of the members doesn't like the word heartburn, but I'm going to use it, like heartache about what happens to any anybody when something like this changes. So that five percent of members will experience their benefit differently. And what that means is there could be a program like the AstraZeneca program that they have to apply for to get their medication for free. There's going to be a transition period, so they'll have some time to do that application. They will be shepherded through that application by Smith RX. But in the end, the upshot may be that they'll get the medication for free. They may not qualify for it, but they'll, that will be a different experience. So that would be one of the possible five percent that would be experiencing their program differently. If they don't qualify for that for that zero-dollar AstraZeneca support, then Smith will find kind of the next lowest cost option for them. So there may be a copay assistance card that they can use. Smith will help make sure that they get in contact with that. But there is, this is not something that they have to go it alone. It is something though, that right now they are not doing that. They're not applying. They're not being asked to apply. There also may be some, I think there were a handful of medications that maybe, there may be a different medication on the form, the list of covered medications that has the same clinical equivalent that a person would be asked to switch switch to. Again, there will be a time period during which they will have fills and be notified, hey, your medication, instead of taking the brand-name Simicort, we need you to take the, we'd like you to take the generic Simicort. There will be a crosswalk. If a person though, on the plan, cannot take the generic, right? And needs to take the brand, there's a process by which their their doctor can write a letter of medical necessity and go through that process as well. But we also want to be very clear that there will be five percent approximately of the folks on the plan who will have a different experience as a result of this change. I could go into more detail because, but just know also, like my example about the Simicort, for example, those changes happen even current state where the pharmacy benefit manager changes what's on the list of drugs today. So it's not to say that moving forward, that type of different experience wouldn't also exist for that member. Answer, go ahead.
I think there's one one other thing that probably is worth calling out. Some people receive their medications through the mail. A lot of very expensive medications, they're not stocked at the local pharmacies. So they get them through the mail and those are specialty pharmacies. The specialty pharmacies are usually chosen by the pharmacy benefit manager. So those people might have to receive their medication through the mail just from a different specialty pharmacy. So there's a process of, you know, switching from one specialty pharmacy to another.
So that would be part of that five percent too.
If I may continue, Mr. Chair. So I appreciate that. My my next question is, my concern is if someone's taking a medicine, the worst-case scenario is we're not going to get something declined, that they're not going to be able to take a medicine. They might just have to change that medicine to a generic. And then if that doesn't work, they have to go through their doctor. But there's going to be, no one losing their benefits basically from this.
Correct, correct. There there is, the overlap in the drugs, the overlap in the network of retail pharmacies is phenomenal. So it's it's it's, I think ninety-eight percent overlap and the two percent in in what falls out, then there's a pathway to make sure that no one is, the last thing we would ever want to recommend is for someone not to be able to have their medication therapy. That's not, that's not the intention and that that will not be part of this transition.
I think it's also important to note that the example that we gave, brand to generic, that's just an example. Sometimes there are multiple brands that treat the same medical condition and one brand is covered and one brand is not. So some of those folks, if there's no generic, may be asked to switch from one brand-name medication to another brand-name medication that's covered, so, but treats the same condition. It's in the same drug class. So that's another thing that may happen.
Thank you. If I may, just one last question I have here. It might lead to a couple more. But you had mentioned on there that one point two million in savings, but you'd also mentioned that the increase was going to be somewhere from fourteen to eighteen percent. I think if I remember that slide correctly. Is the one point two savings before the fourteen to eighteen percent increase or is it after the fourteen?
Thanks, you're seeing me smile. Thanks for asking that question. So because new drugs are coming to market every single day, today's prescription drug span spend, every drug that was purchased today is going to be different than tomorrow. Right? You might be trying one thing out with your doctor, realize that, oh, actually you need to take this different medication. Right? The only way for us to quantify savings is to do a retrospective. Right? If the county had had this arrangement in place last year, what would the county have spent? That's the only way for us to do it. And that's the one point two million dollars. Okay? So what we, so what we can't say is that tomorrow, you're going to all take the same medications. Right? And and as a result, there will be one point two million dollars spent last week. That that's an impossible thing for us to say.
Yeah, one thing to add there too is that it's 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 an important distinction. So it's, I mean, maybe to answer that more directly, it's before. The one point two million is before the fourteen to eighteen percent. Maybe one of the things that we didn't do a good job of calling out is the fourteen to eighteen percent with an organization like Smith RX comes down quite a bit. So that the long-term cost trajectory of prescription drugs is not going to be fourteen to eighteen percent. It's going to be something less than that, you know? And even if you look at healthcare expenses over the course of a ten-year period, if I can find two percentage points on that growth trend, that equates to millions of dollars over that that ten years. So that's another value. So if you if you if you're taking a look at that fourteen to eighteen percent, we're looking to lower that trend line as a result of of this move.
Real quick, do you know what we spend per year just on the prescription portion?
Oh, I knew I was going to get these questions.
We'll get you that.
I'm going to have to get it. I'm sorry, I don't have it. I don't have it handy.
We're going up now. So thank you so much. I really appreciate you answering the questions. Thank you so much.
But just backing in, the fifteen, the fifteen percent savings is is in the point two. So I have to do the reverse math, but now I'm standing in front of you and that makes me sweat. So I don't want to give you the wrong number. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Cusano.
Yeah, I want to thank you for your presentation. I'm impressed with that too. You're going with a company that is transparent. I've done a lot, just due to my career outside of sitting here. I've gone down a lot of those rabbit holes, reading about these health benefit. I know the complexity of what the nation is facing on this and and we're no different than the rest of the the country. So I thank you for doing that and coming up with a way to, of course, save us money. That's what we're always interested to, we also care very much for our employees and to know that they really won't see much of a change other than under a few little unique situations. And I appreciate that. Now Anita might have said it, I, you know, I zoned out there for a second. But what I wanted to know is is that with the Health Coalition, I know you have a voting system with that. Was it unanimous or was there a difference of opinion?
There was one bargaining unit that voted it down. Everybody else voted to move.
Okay.
I think it was just a, changes scary sometimes, especially with healthcare coverage. I think that's what it was that vote.
Any further questions I have on that issue, I'll privately ask you rather than publicly. But when the county went to that coalition, that was one, a big, major change that we did a number of years ago. And it's paid off in many ways. And you guys, Plant Moran has been behind it since the beginning and I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Commissioner Wayhill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to you and the Health Coalition for bringing this to us. We heard from Dr. Skidmore earlier about federal spending and how healthcare is driving that. And, you know, it's unsustainable at that level, but in many ways, we have the same issue at in local government and at the county. So you can draw a line from what he was saying to what you all are working on. The the savings, the one point two roughly, approximately, does that, do you know if that accrues entirely to our general fund? Or is it mostly general fund because some are paid by grants? Do you have a sense of that?
Yes. So given the the cost of coverage at a, as when we calculate it on an annualized basis or a monthly basis, right now that is actually over the hard cap. So the county's total, the total spend per employee is over that hard cap. So any savings that is generated through a change like this actually inures completely to an employee unless that that spend falls below the hard cap. So one of the tough things last year, right, or this in 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 June of this year was the fact that the hard caps went up so little and the cost went up so much. So employees were paying, like it was, it was a bad shock, right, out of out of paychecks. So that's part of what also was a a really a gadfly in terms of moving forward with trying to find a solve. The hope is that this also, those two percent that Jonathan talked about, the trend, that will continue to inure to the the employee, right? So not having to pay as much through their.
That's helpful. I I suggest you add that to your presentation. Because I think employees, and you may have sort of said it and I just didn't quite pick up on it, but I think it's a, it's a good point. The five percent that will experience some sort of change, I'm wondering what the raw number of employees is. Is it?
The raw, it's actually a member. So when we, when we look at something like this, we look at every single person on the plan. Sometimes I say belly buttons on the plan because that, we can all relate to that. So everything from babies all the way through the the parents that have the coverage. And it's less than a hundred individuals now. It could be that one of those hundred individuals is on several medications that may have a change. Typically speaking, that might happen, right? But it's less than a hundred unique individuals.
And forgive me if I missed this part related to that. Will human resources, I I don't know that you would provide the service, but will our HR department be working with those one hundred people to help them manage the transition?
So we have been through this trans, we have helped other organizations that we serve go through this transition. And Smith does a very nice job. We'll work with them to understand, get a fresh look. Because again, things change pretty rapidly in terms of what drugs are taken. So we'll get a fresh look going into this transition and folks will get communication. And so part of our job, together with HR, is to make sure that people are looking for communication in the mail or phone calls and they don't just think it's spam. So we'll work pretty hard with them on that. Then we'll also make sure that there's a soft landing on the other side of the transition. Like when I mentioned, there are a couple of months where you can get a fill of your prescription. So you don't have some, you don't have folks standing at the pharmacy not able to get their drugs.
So one of the things that can happen in a transition like this, and it's purposeful and it can seem like a shock, but if someone's at the pharmacy filling the script, there can be special messages that the pharmacist sees and will pass that on to the members saying, do you know this is your last fill? Your last grace fill of this medication? And again, somebody could hear that if they're not paying attention to the communication, they can take that negatively. There's a part that it's kind of okay that they're taking it negatively because if they take it negatively, they will act. If they don't have that, if they don't have that shock event, it's much less likely that they will re, they will act. Those reading their communications, they will act off those communications. But if somebody's ignoring it and then they get that shock event at the pharmacy, they they will act. So it's not always a bad thing to have that shock event.
All right, I'll let you know if I get shocked. Thank you for your diligence and teamwork with our employees to make this happen. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, any one additional wish to speak? All right, thank you so much for your time. Action is required here, Resolution 2025-2768. Approval of request by Genesee County's Healthcare Coalition, change pharmacy benefit managers. All right, it's been moved by Commissioner Wayhill, supported by Commissioner Shoemaker. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, all in favor, any can be saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. That brings us to our Community Economic Development Committee. Dr. Commissioner Beverly Brown, chairperson, Commissioner Dale Wayhill, vice chairperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move Resolution 2025-2739, approval of Catholic charities transfer requests.
All right, been moved by the chair, supported by Commissioner Cusano. Any discussion?
You know, you keep giving me credit for things I don't do.
Did you do it? That wasn't you?
It was another one too, but that's okay. I'll take the credit.
Shoemaker?
Yeah.
Was that you?
Well, it was Dale and I, but yes.
Yeah. All right, well, you all must be drinking the same tea because you sounded like. Okay, all right.
Drawing our voices towards the.
Yeah, all right. So it's been moved and supported. There's no discussion. All in favor, any can be saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes.
I move Resolution 2025-2770, Genesee, our county, our future master plan, comment period, approval request.
Support.
All right, that wasn't you, Commissioner Cusano. That was Commissioner Avery.
Never to be confused.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, all in favor, any can be saying aye, aye. All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. You have a report from Economic Development.
No report.
All right, Finance Committee, Commissioner Mark Cusano, Chair, and Commissioner Gary Getzinger, Vice Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm going to do a consent agenda. Other than the first one, I want to pull that out. Is there any other ones that everybody want, anybody wants to pull out? Seeing none, I'm not going to move this because I can't support it as written. But Resolution 25-2619, approval of a request to create, post and fill one strategic growth officer position.
Move it.
Support. All right, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Well, beans, I pulled it out. I'll, I can't support it because of the way it's written and how this person reports to the board. It leaves the entire board out and it, they are to report to the chair, which presently is you, but it doesn't matter, you know, who the chair is, and the economic chair, which is Dr. Brown. It leaves out the. It leaves out the board, and all of our directors answer to the full board, and to leave the full board out of the loop. I've seen, I, I just, unfortunately, I've been around for too long. I've seen other people leave that information hidden from the full board, and I don't ever want to put myself or anybody in here as an unequal. We're all equal, and we should all have access to that information at all times, you know. Years ago, I ran into a situation where that was, information was being withheld from the full board, and I happened to ask for it, and it was denied. Well, I, as you can imagine, I raised a few questions, and, uh, this puts it in writing that they don't have to report to the board. And I cannot, and I will not accept that on my behalf or anybody, my fellow commissioners. They report to the board, as all of our directors do. That's my thoughts.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Yeah, I concur with Commissioner Cusano. I don't see, you know, why we want to change this particular position and make it different from any other position here at the county. Um, I think we have a line of command, and I think that we should be consistent with that.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Yeah, so I, as one of the co-authors or tri-authors, I guess, of this, I, I would be open to a, an amendment if, if people that are objecting want to make one, um, to, to, you know, do as Commissioner Cusano and Commissioner Winfrey have just expressed. So, if, if you want to make an amendment, we can do that.
That they report to the full board?
I would withdraw, uh, my support if you wanted to.
All right, so, so, so before we, okay, you just withdrew your support for the motion, the, the resolution that's on the table. So, uh, someone would need to, well, you're getting ready to make a, a motion to amend it. So, we would need a new motion altogether, because there's not support unless there's somebody else that's supporting. Just follow Robert's rules.
Well, I, I think that the main motion, i- if you don't withdraw, your support is still on the table, and we have to have a main motion in order to amend it.
Right, so if he's what, so.
We want to keep it on the floor.
I, we could, I, we could do it, we could do it one of two ways, I believe, and it's, I think we're still within the rules. We, I can withdraw it from there, and we could bring a new motion to the floor with the change of the resolution, or we can change the, the resolution with that motion if you want to, but you'd have to have an additional motion then.
So, why don't, why don't we do it this way, make it clean? So, if, if you maintain your motion, Commissioner Wayhill, you can make a substitute motion to amend that?
Well, it wouldn't be me. It would be Commissioner Cusano that would make the substitute motion. I'll, I'll support it, but I think it's his motion.
And I'll withdraw, my withdrawal.
I'm, I'm trying to find the exact language.
I don't have the exact language.
Yeah, I, I think we want to make sure that we are looking at it.
Well, we could also table it too. Uh, I mean, there is, it's not like, this is something that has to be done today. You know, we can postpone it.
So, that would be a substitute.
I'd be fine with that, and then that'd give, uh, me time to sit down with Dale and, uh, change a few words.
All right, so there's a substitute motion on the floor to postpone this until our next committee meetings? Or one, one, what, you want to identify?
Yeah.
All right.
In January.
Is there any discussion? All right, I have discussion. I actually support that, um, when, um, I actually support that, and then I also think that that would give us time as a board to have discussion about what reporting structure looks like. There's not agreement on this board about what it looks like amongst members, uh, and I believe that, um, that that's a discussion that will be coming, and then that position, uh, I'm sure will align with whatever the will of the body is at that time as we talk about how departments report, where they report, and what that looks like. Because currently, uh, our department heads are not reporting directly to this board. They're reporting to our Director of Administration, and that's a point of discussion that, um, that will need to take place. Uh, and that's not my own perspective. That's perspective from various members amongst this board as well. There is an agreement. All right, any additional discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor indicate for the postponement. All in favor, uh, indicate aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. This item is postponed. But now back to you, Commissioner Cusano, for your, uh, consent agenda.
I move, uh, two through nine by consent. Does anybody have any comments or questions on two through nine? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, I think I just took over your position.
That's right, I'm gonna bring you to gavel next.
But, uh, anyway.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye. No discussion, any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. Is there a report from the Finance Committee?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, now we're moving on to, uh, governmental, uh, operations. Uh, Commissioner Wayhill, chairperson, Commissioner Sean Shoemaker, vice chairperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will move, uh, as a consent agenda, items one through fourteen, and certainly accept any separations.
All right, move by the chair, supported by Commissioner Avery. Any separations?
Item three, if we could please, Resolution 2025-2665.
All right, separating item three, any other? I guess, I guess I'm taking over your role now. Go ahead.
You're doing great.
It's catchy.
He said it's contagious. All right, okay, seeing no other separation, so we have before us item one, two, four, uh, item one through fourteen excluding item number three. That's the easier way to say it. Is there any discussion on those items with the exception of item number three? All right, seeing no discussion, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. Commissioner Wayhill.
Uh, I will move Resolution 2025-2665.
Support.
All right, moved by the chair, supported by Commissioner Cusano. You did do it that time. All right, um, any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I discussed my concerns with this last time that, uh, as far as the fact that we believe that space is gonna stay the same and this furniture can be reused, which I don't think it will be, especially if we get a new building. So, thank you, and thank you to the Government Ops Chair.
All right, any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right, motion passes. Is there a report from the Government Operations?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have two items. Commissioner Shoemaker and I met last evening to discuss where we stand with our evaluation of direct reports. In this case, it's the Director of Administration position and the Corporation Counsel role. Um, thank you all for submitting your evaluations by, uh, the deadline of November 30th. As you know, this is consistent with a policy that we adopted probably sixty days ago, and then subsequent to that, we adopted a process and a timeline for administering the evaluations and completing them. I, I will admit that it's taking me longer to compile, uh, especially the narrative comments. People used an interesting, uh, arrangement of formats to submit these in, so I find myself in some cases having to type out, uh, the narrative comments because I want them collected in a single document so that you can all see them. So, um, I'm not completely done with the compilation into the aggregated, the two aggregated documents, but, um, I will say again, as I did last week, that we need to, we need to set a special meeting date so that, uh, we as a group can look at what we said, and the average, there, there's also a numeric score, so we'll see what the averages are there, uh, for each of the categories where we've evaluated our two employees. Uh, and then the narrative comments will be word for word as written by folks. Um, I have been in contact with Corporation Counsel's office in the form of Attorney Bush, and, um, he's helped me think through what our requirements are in terms of open meetings, making sure that we abide by the letter of the law, that we protect the rights of the people that we're evaluating, and also make sure that the Board of Commissioners is in compliance, uh, with what it needs to be in compliance with. So, um, my suggestion, and I think, uh, Commissioner Shoemaker agreed that we should look at maybe next Wednesday, the seventeenth of December for an evening special meeting, uh, but I'm, I'm throwing that to you, Mr. Chair, and my colleagues to see, uh, about people's availability.
As discussed, I'm, s- 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 okay with me. I'm fine with it. Any other colleagues?
Five-thirty start time probably.
If not.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. If, if not, um, because I had reached out to several people, and I know they're trying to move things around, and I know it's near the holiday season, um, we could also put another date forward. Just, you know, I, I was thinking, um, we have an organizational meeting on the seventh. We could do it the night of the seventh, after organizational meeting that evening, also if it'd be, if it would be better, because I know a lot of people have events, um, going on that evening, several members, so, and I don't want, you know, I know it's last minute, so I appreciate that. And then on top of that, um, I just want all the board members to know how much work, uh, Commissioner Wayhill has put into this. I, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, it, it's, it's a lot, um, of organizing and structuring, you know, he's asked me what I've thought, and he's taken direction with what we've worked on together, but he's actually the one formulating and doing all this, and it is a lot, so I greatly appreciate it.
Some of you wrote these out in Sanskrit, so I'm, I'm just trying to interpret everything. I'm looking at you, Commissioner Avery. Thank, thank you, Commissioner Shoemaker. My pleasure.
So, if it's, if, if it's, if anyone has a problem with the seventeenth, please speak now, and then, like I said, if not, my second option would be the seventh that evening.
Yeah, I would, I would go for, I would vote for the seventh.
I would echo the seventh because, um, the, uh, the seventeenth, there's a Metro Alliance meeting that I have to attend at the same time, so.
Seven's fine with me.
I, I can certainly use the time, so, uh, fine, fine by me.
All right.
Do we need to, who needs to call the special meeting? Would that be?
I think that, um, I think we, we can just vote. I think it'd be appropriate if we vote tonight to set it. So, let's, let's, you know, I entertain a motion to, to vote to select that special meeting.
So, I'll move that we, uh, convene in a special meeting on the evening, five-thirty PM of January seventh, Wednesday, January seventh, to review, um, the evaluation results in aggregate form for the Director of Administration and the Corporation Counsel.
Support. All right, it's been moved and supported, uh, to set that meeting as already mentioned. Is there any discussion?
The, the seventh, January seventh, says it's nine-thirty in the morning, I believe.
No, that's the organizational meeting.
We would have two meetings, Dr. Brown.
Oh, so there's.
One in the morning and then one in the evening.
There's one at five-thirty as well on the seventh? That's what we're looking at now. So, adding that. Okay, I, I was thinking, I misunderstood that. I thought we would just do the evaluation immediately following the organizational meeting.
We, we, we could do that, um.
Because that means we have to come in and then come back.
Yeah, it'll, it'll make for a long morning, but we could do that. I'm, I, I can do either. Would you prefer it be in the morning?
Go ahead, I would.
I'd prefer they be back to back, honestly.
I'll revise, uh, so I don't know that we, do we need to call a special meeting, or do we go into closed session? Attorney Bush, do you want to, have you been following this back and forth at all? So, if we, if we have this, uh, discussion, uh, which I imagine will be in closed session, it, that's based on the, the, the preferences of the two individuals being evaluated, as I understand it. If we do that in combination with our organizational meeting, is it a, is it a special meeting, or is it simply going into, into closed session?
Well, I, I presume you would have to add it to the agenda, uh, but certainly, as, as I've indicated, you can't go into closed session unless you have an actual meeting to go into it from. I hadn't thought about whether this would have to be considered a special meeting, but it seems to me practically that if you have, uh, if you have your agenda for the organizational meeting, and you put this on there, it seems like that, that would be acceptable.
I would think it would be under other business, and at that time, we would, uh, presumably go into closed session. So, I don't, the, all of that is to say, I don't think we need to call a special meeting. It doesn't sound like it.
I actually just had this this morning with another group, and we went into closed session under the same agenda.
So, I think I'll withdraw my motion, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you.
I, I just have one more other item, and this technically isn't under governmental operations, but it's, it's technically under, uh, Chair Winfrey's committee. But I have now watched all three meetings of the Senior Services Task Force from, from beginning to end on our YouTube channel, and they are an extraordinarily conscientious group of citizens who are participating, asking great questions, and I will say that the staff support, uh, in the form of Mr. Bradshaw and Lynn Radzalowski and, uh, people on Mr. Bradshaw's staff, uh, is exceptional. And so, we should be, I think, very proud of the progress that they're making. I, you know, in a lot of ways, I think it's an impossible job, um, because we don't have unlimited amounts of money, and we've got unlimited need. But I'm really impressed with how they're conducting themselves. Just wanted to say that.
Um, Commissioner, I attended their last meeting. What day was that last week? Yeah, I attended their last meeting, and, um, I echo the sentiments that, that you share. Uh, very much engaged, and I think, um, the board did a good, great job of selecting people to serve. All right, so, uh, that concludes your report.
It does, thank you.
All right, next we have Human Services Committee, Commissioner Winfrey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move items, uh, one and two.
All right, both items have been moved, supported by Commissioner, uh, Avery. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. Uh, any report from Human Services?
Uh, no report.
Okay, Public Works Committee, Commissioner Brian Flewelling, chair, Commissioner James Avery, vice chair.
Mr. Chair, I'll move items one through ten with any separations.
Support.
All right, um, are there any separations? All right, seeing none, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. All right, that brings us, do we have any unfinished, finished business tonight?
No.
Any new, we have new business?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, there's two items before you. Uh, the first is the letter, uh, from the CS Mott Foundation that says draft, um, this morning, I believe it is. They approved a grant, uh, for some work out at the Parks and Recreation Commission, 1.3 million dollars. Uh, Patrick is here. He'll need to lower that down a little bit, probably, uh, but can explain it. Uh, reason it says draft is because we got the letter before their board took action, so, um, but we need to get it approved prior to the end of the year so we can get the money from them.
What's it for?
Yeah, so, um, uh, we are taking this out of order a little bit. Uh, Park Commission meets tomorrow, so, uh, pending your approval, pending Park Commission approval, uh, we'll be moving forward with this. So, what this is, is this is for, uh, Locomotive 464, uh, which is the, uh, large Baldwin that we have. It's currently not in operation. Uh, what happens every, um, fifteen years or every 1,472 hours, whatever comes first, per FRA guidelines, we have to take that out of service and do an inspection and a rebuild. So, we are at the timeline, uh, on where we need to do this for 464, and about the time that we get done with 464, uh, we'll be starting this process all over again with Engine 152, and it's just, uh, a cycle that goes, uh, back and forth. Uh, we've been very, uh, lucky with the support of the CS Mott Foundation, uh, through this process over the years, um, and, uh, look forward to getting her back on the tracks.
All right, any, uh, is action required on this? Yes. All right.
I'll move it.
All right, moved by Commissioner Getzinger, supported by, uh, Dr. Commissioner Brown. All right, any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Shoemaker.
Um, I have two questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Patrick, um, you mentioned it's gotta go through parks. I, I don't know why it'd have to go through parks if it comes to us for final approval. I don't think we, that'd be up to Brian to answer that, but I think we can just move this, and I don't think they need to go through, because they, they pass it, and then we pass it, kind of like the Health Board used to, and there are items that they, if, we, we, we are the governing body, technically, they're advisory, so I think you would be fine. I checked with Brian on that. I don't think you need to go through that process. Next is, um, as far as this goes, how many, uh, train rides you gotta give to pay for 1.3 million dollars?
Ooh, that's a good question. I'd have to look it up.
What, what do we charge per ride?
Um, so, uh, per, per ride, it's about 1350, so, for a forty-minute ride.
Okay, all right. I appreciate it. Like I said, I appreciate the Mott Foundation's help with this. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any additional discussion? Just wanted to, um, um, say, uh, as it relates to Patrick and the team out at Crossroads Village. Excellent, excellent. and the team out at Crossroads Village, excellent, excellent, outstanding work, excellent, outstanding job that, uh, everyone in Parks do. Was out there a week before last, I think it was, for the lighting of the county Christmas tree, and there were just over four thousand Genesee County residents out there. Over four thousand, and, uh, a lot of kids and, and people happy, but just very impressive what you all do. You do an outstanding job.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no additional discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. Anything else? Oh, yeah.
Second item is the draft meeting, um, schedule for next year. At the very least, we need to set a meeting date on the seventh, officially set it, but, um, Commissioner Shoemaker asked that I draft this, um, entire year schedule.
So, Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, for most of you, uh, last year I pushed for, as you know, uh, most of you, I pushed for workshops last year, and my fear, to get them on the schedule, my fear was we wouldn't have them, and we didn't have as many as I think we should've, and speaking with my fellow commissioners, I believe they're in sentiment for that. So, what I had, uh, Mr. Freeman helped me create is something where we're gonna have a meeting a month for subcommittees, we'll have a meeting for full board, and then we will have a workshop. Since I've talked to several of you, um, I was speaking with Dr. Brown, and, uh, she thought it'd be a good idea to, um, actually have an intent for these meetings. Um, as an example, um, one of the workshops might be our discussion on the mall. My first workshop I would recommend for us is Priorities, because it's been a year basically since we've done that. Some of them have changed, um, for many of us, as economic factors have changed and other factors have changed. I don't know how deep you wanna go into planning those out. I know Dr. Brown's very important to her, and I wanna give everybody a chance to speak on it, but I, I'm, I'm in large support of this, because my frustration is after being here seven years, I know we always have the best of intentions, but like the workshops last year, it didn't happen. And those discussions are so vital to us to give staff direction and which way we go, so, um, if you have any questions on, what we prepared, I'll be glad to answer them right now, or anything else you'd like to comment on it. And I know Dr. Brown, uh, like I said, she prepared some, and if you'd like me to read what she typed, may I can, or if she wants to read it, what she, she had planned, but I, my, I don't have a problem with, uh, most of the things she has on there, but I think maybe it should be a decision of the board to decide what those workshops should be, but I would encourage us for sure, the first one be a priorities meeting again, because we have really, uh, we started that, we started to give our staff direction, then we looked at them and went, okay, we've got other things going on, and we didn't deliver on that, and that's on us. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, I have a couple of things before we go to Dr. Brown. So, I don't have a, uh, an issue with the calendar. I don't have an issue with identifying in advance what we want the workshops to be. I don't have an issue with, uh, anything that's presented, um, in terms of the idea for, uh, two things. One is, I think that we can vote to do whatever we wanna do, and if it's the will of the body, you know, I'll support, but I think that some of, some of this that we're talking about is most of, um, I, I'd like to see it done in an organizational meeting. I think with some discussions that are taking place, as we are aware, and, uh, I won't, you know, get into that here, 'cause it's not, it's not that serious, but I just wanna make sure we're not putting the cart before the horse on some discussions, um, because like the list that you have of what we suggest, uh, workshops to be, I haven't seen that. Uh, nobody's mentioned that to me. Uh, the other thing is, in terms of setting, uh, whether or not we're going to have committee meetings in certain places, uh, currently unless the bylaws change in the organizational meeting, whoever the chair is, that could be any of you, or, or any of us, um, the chair determines what that cadence is by our bylaws now, in terms of what, uh, how committees are set up and how those function. So, I just think, you know, I don't have a problem with the schedule at all, but I just think that we should hold off until our organizational meeting and then have those discussions, and then also give whoever the, the chair of this board is at that time, and committee chairs of various committees who will be established at that time, give the board an opportunity to discuss that in view of the year that is ahead, because at that point, chairs will be selected for twenty-twenty-six, vice chairs, the chairperson and the vice chair, chairperson. So, that's my concern. I just don't want us to put things ahead. And then lastly, um, just a little exception to whether workshops happened or did not happen. Here's the thing, uh, any, um, member of the commission can request a workshop already and have. There are workshops we had that commissioners requested particularly, and then the additional thing is, uh, the chair has not, is not the only person who can call a workshop meeting, just as, uh, the chair, just as each committee chair has the ability to call meetings to discuss priorities and projects throughout the year. I'm not gonna weigh in on what I believe that looked like this past year, because I wouldn't do that, uh, as it relates to committee chairs and so on and so forth, 'cause I think everybody has served well, but I just want us to be very cautious and careful as we close out this year, um, to, you know, be, let's be cautious and careful of critiques and also, uh, our politics. That's all I'll say.
Go ahead. And I agree with, uh, Del Rico on this, uh, and I also believe that, uh, maybe the organizational meeting, one, if we are doing it with priorities, maybe the, at that time, once we talk about our priorities, would be a good time to assign the priorities to the workshops, 'cause our priorities may change from what they are today to workshops. So, I would think all of that work should be done at the organizational meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm not ready to vote on this tonight. No, just got it today. Haven't, haven't even thought about it.
Uh, Char- Charles, you didn't get the one I laid on your desk about a week and a half ago?
No, I didn't see my, I didn't go, go to my office, I guess.
Okay, um...
Oh, one, one second, Commissioner. Um, well, well, you start it, so Commissioner Shoemaker.
No, let everybody speak, and then I'm gonna...
Well, I, I did get what you put on my desk, um, a, a week and a half ago, or wha- whatever it was, um, and I thought it was a, uh, a excellent plan. I'm a planner. I like to have things done, if, if I can have them done twelve months in advance, it does help me to plan, um, and I, I understand what everybody is saying. Philosophically, I think that workshops are much more effective in, in terms of helping us do a deep dive. Um, I agree, we need to really clarify our priorities. I don't have any problem with that being done at the organizational meeting, um, but, uh, as I share with Commissioner Shoemaker, I do believe we need to identify which workshops we're gonna be focusing on for, for housing or for, um, you know, the, the mall or broadband, or wha- whatever the topics are that rise to the top of, of our priority list. Um, I, I, I just think that we need to be more intentional about having, um, workshops that are facilitated in a way that helps us get to the outcomes that we want.
Commissioner Cuzno.
Yeah, I, um, in general, I appreciate, uh, the effort and the concept of what Commissioner, uh, Shoemaker has done here. Uh, my, you know, I, I share the sentiments with, uh, the chair and, uh, Mr. Getzinger, that I don't think that, uh, now is the time to, uh, set those priorities or, or the topics for the whole year, and I'm not necessarily sure we should do it at the organizational meeting for the whole year, but at least set up something for the initial, uh, workshop and then go from there. Um, the other thing that came to me is, uh, that with only meeting here as the board once a month, there's been a concern by me and others, uh, about emergency purchases, and by only going to one meeting a month, my thoughts are that we may see more of those emergency purchase requests popping up, and I don't know if that's true or not, but I'm just saying that, that's one of my concerns. Yeah, that's it.
All right, Commissioner Shoemaker.
Um, thank you, everyone, for, uh, your opinions and thoughts on this. I, I question it, and this is why, because I've been down here seven years, and we've approved this before. We've had organizational meetings before. So, I, I just wanna be proactive. Once our employees and staff, as soon as possible, can prepare for what the year's gonna look like too, so we prepare for what the year's gonna look like. As far as, uh, emergency purchases, Marty, I'd met with staff and stuff like that, and they explained a few things of how the process goes and how it went, and I think you are correct, you might see a few, uh...
Additional.
Additional. But what we could do on that same night of the workshop, if we know something's coming up, we're all gonna be here anyways, we could have before the workshop an actual, 'cause this is, you know, we could, we could change it if we know that's coming up and have a board meeting and then go into a workshop afterwards to, to conduct that. It's up to the board how they wanna handle it.
Legal counsel, if we could do it that way.
We'd have to do it twenty-four hours in advance, but...
Thinking.
But, that's what I'm saying, but that'd be enough time, correct, Brian?
Yeah, we just have to comply with the Open Meetings Act, which requires eighteen hours' notice to post for a meeting.
Yeah. So, so we could make changes. If everybody wants to wait, then, then I'm, I'm fine with it. Like I said, I, I was just trying to be proactive, put something out there. I'm very frustrated with the fact of that we didn't have workshops like we thought we were, and I realize, like I said during that meeting, and if everyone thinks back to it, I stated, everybody gets busy through the year, everybody gets doing their thing, they make their agenda, so if they know they have to be here on a Wednesday for this workshop, then it's gonna happen, but we didn't. And I just wanna be proactive this year, 'cause I think they're very productive. I think when we get together, we accomplish great things, and I think we need to give our staff that direction so they can do the things that we would like to see done, and that we have a better understanding of what's going on within our own county government. So, that's kinda where we are, so if we wanna hold off what I would do, if everybody's fine with that, let's just move to hold the board organizational meeting, a motion to hold the board organizational meeting at nine-thirty, and afterwards have the additional meeting for evaluation of Director of Administration and Corporation Council. I put a motion forth that that's what we do at this time, and then if you guys wanna adopt the rest on the date, uh, the seventh for the calendar, then that's fine too.
All right, so that's a motion. Uh, any support?
Support.
All right, been moved and supported by Commissioner Brown, uh, Commissioner Flewelling.
One question. It's gonna be one meeting though, right? We're just, we're adding the closed session to the agenda, to discuss evals. Okay, just wanna clarify something.
All right, Commissioner Wayhill.
I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Getzinger.
Are we also putting this on then as an agenda item for meetings?
Yeah, yeah, this is normally on the agenda for, um, at least the last three years I've been down here. Yeah.
All right, so, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanna make sure I understand, so we're, we're not adopting the full schedule, as I understand the motion. We are putting on the calendar, our organizational meeting, nine-thirty on the seventh. We had already talked earlier during my report that, under other business, we would have the two evaluation reviews. I, what, what I'm missing is the priority piece. Is that, is that happening potentially? It's not part of the motion, but potentially that would happen not until the twenty-eighth of January, or I heard something about talking about the priorities at the organization. Is that, is that the intention of this, this body?
I think I misspoke. We're, we're talking about doing priorities at the first workshop.
Okay, all right. I understood. Um, and you might recall that the priorities, as they stand, draft form, were passed out a month and a half ago, I think by me, through Mr. Freeman. I had intended on bringing those to a Government Ops meeting as a resolution for adoption, but then when I was thinking about it, I agree with everything that's been said, that I think we needed one more workshop. My only concern is that we're waiting till the end of January to have that discussion. Um, I, I'm fine with that, but I would, I would prefer to, to tackle that earlier so we can start the new year with our priorities. But, I'll, I'll support the motion as it stands. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Commissioner Wayhill, uh, just as a, talking point, we can talk about it later. Uh, the first week, we have our, um, committee meetings. If you wanted to, we could arrange something when we pass the schedule, and then we could have another workshop continued later that month, but, but like I said, we can discuss it later as a group. Please let me know what everyone thinks, or everyone else, and we'll...
Yeah, I, I think your motion is great, 'cause that we have to do at least that much, and then we can kinda figure out how to address the workshop and include a discussion around the priorities. Excuse me.
Could the priorities, again, be an agenda item, and then we could choose, tackle them that morning, or table them to the workshop? I'm just a thought.
Can I, can I handle that one?
It's gonna be a meeting.
It might, yeah.
It's gonna be a meeting, meeting. I don't think...
Um, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Shoemaker.
Um, Gary, that's, that's gonna be, I think, a longer conversation than, um, we're ready to have that morning, plus, uh, there will be a new chair, a new, um, you know, chairs of committees and so on and so forth, so I don't know if that's the, my opinion's the best morning to actually have. Plus, I think we're gonna be here between the evaluations and the, uh, organizational meeting long enough, so, and eventually, you know, my brain says that's enough, and so, I thi- I think we should do it at a different time.
All right, any additional discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, we're establishing the organizational meeting. All in favor of, uh, of that indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. All right, anything else? All right, any, uh, concluding comments or remarks? All right, this meeting is adjourned at seven-thirty-three. 'Cause it's dark, it feels like it's much later than it is.